It is six o'clock PM on Thursday. And can I please have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Called the meeting to order. And Mr. Belize is on via Zoom. So everybody knows if they miss him in here, he's not in his spaceship, but his office on there now tonight.
What's up, Jay Jay?
He is online. All right. So first thing on the agenda is discussion impossible and vote on returning liquor license fee for Picocchio on Main Street. Twenty-one sixty-two, Main Street, West Warren. Okay. So unfortunately, uh, because he doesn't, didn't, um... They didn't quite make it in our town. Some things got a little expensive for them and they were in the process of getting a liquor license. Because of the fact that they are not able to get their liquor license and they withdrew that opportunity. And they're not going forward with it because they're basically done there. Hopefully, they can move into a new location and start new, but that is their decision to do. I wish they could have made it. They had good food.
Yeah, they did.
Would have been great to keep them in our community and they were very nice people. But tonight's on the liquor license fee and that is a fee of five hundred and twenty-five dollars that will be returned to them. Is that it?
It's returned to the attorney that paid it. I called him and he said to return it to the attorney.
Okay. Okay. Do you have any questions?
No, it's sad to see him go. It was a unique restaurant and yeah, great people, great food. It's too bad.
Uh, Mr. Belize, you have anything?
Um, no, same as Rich. I'm sad to, it's very sad to see them go. We got to get them now. We had food from them. People joined in. They, they had really good food. Unfortunately, they were unable to keep up. But they're listening. The door is open. No questions, sir. Just a sad day.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Ferrari, you have anything?
Yeah, I'm sad to see Picocchio's go. I had the opportunity to eat there a few times for lunch and just really sad to see them go.
Okay. You ready for a motion?
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to refund five hundred and twenty-five dollars for a liquor license to Gerard Basie Bates and Bates PC for the liquor license for Picocchio on Main.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Betty Bettis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Discussion impossible vote to extend the contract with the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission for services related to the town's municipal vulnerability preparedness plan. Okay. This is something we've done several times in the past and it's just kind of a standard thing now. Yeah, CMR PC has been doing a great job with it and, you know... I don't have any negative things about it at all and I think it'd be a good thing to continue on.
Yeah, I think he just has, Chris Dunphy has a couple things to clean up and that's it, so.
Do you have any questions?
I don't.
Mr. Belize, you have any questions?
No, sir. Everything is in order.
Do a motion?
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the extension of the contract with the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission for services related to the town's municipal vulnerability preparedness plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Betty Bettis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, third thing on the agenda, review the recommendation of Weston and Sampson and possible vote to issue a letter of intent to award a contract in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars for the base bid plus alternate one to A. Martins and Sons Construction, Inc. For the school street phase one and Prospect Street Improvement Project and the, and to authorize the town administrator to sign on the town's behalf for all matters relating to this project. Do you have any questions?
Nope, I think, again, this is pretty...
I ended up, Chris Dunphy.
Yeah, I mean, we got a new contract to do work in the school street neighborhood. We've been working there for, I don't know, four or five years. Slowly, maybe a little longer, slowly getting the streets done, the sewer, the water, you know, whatever the needs are over there and... This is kind of on the downhill side now. We're, we're kind of wrapping things up, so this is good.
Mr. Belize, do you have any questions?
Everything looks straightforward, sir. I have no questions.
Okay. Do you have anything, sir?
So, Mr. Chairman, this is just a notice of an award, a letter of an intent. So if the board was to sign this tonight, then we would send this back to Weston and Sampson. They would send out the official award notices on behalf of the town. The project would start moving into the contractual phase of the project. So if the board approves this tonight, then within the next few weeks or so, expect to see a contract before the board, just on, based on some funding. And I would like the board to review the contract and then, and then I anticipate the reason why I asked for the signature authority for this project is that there's going to be stuff that comes up, administrative stuff related to this project that they would need a timely signature on. And I was hoping that the board would give me the authority to sign on the town's behalf for the project. But the contract will come before you and the contract will be signed by the board, so I'm...
So I don't have a problem with you signing. Just make sure as you always keep us informed of any new information, any changes or anything like that, so we can remain educated on this.
Sure.
Do you have any questions?
No.
And you're good, Derek, right?
I am good.
Motion?
All right. I'll make a motion to award a contract in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars to A. Martins and Sons Construction, Inc. For the school street phase one project and authorize the town administrator to sign on the town's behalf for all matters relating to this project.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Betty Bettis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, reviewing. Are we signing?
Well, I got a stack of stuff we can do later.
Review impossible vote to approve the minutes of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Application Public Hearing held on February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Do we get minutes?
Yeah.
It's in number four. Turn the next one. All right, is it in number five?
I don't know.
Yep. There it goes. Somehow I screwed yours up.
Corinne made them.
All right. Mr. Dunphy would over this.
Do you have any questions on this?
No.
Mr. Belize, you have any questions on it? On the minutes?
No, sir. No questions.
All right. Yeah.
So we will get those minutes to Chris as part of our application for CDVG.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Motion?
Do you have any questions or anything?
No, no. Make a motion to approve the minutes of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Application Public Hearing held on February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Betty Bettis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Review and possibly sign an intermunicipality and intermu... Intermunicipal agreement between Warren and the Town of Palmer for certain public health services through the Mill Towns Public Health Coalition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My vision's gone blurry, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board may recall, a few months ago, we had a presentation by a group of public health coalition advocates that came before us when our former administrative assistant to the Board of Health, Brianna Dunn, was here. They had a presentation about us getting involved into a, a, a regional agreement where we provide services between multiple communities for public health initiatives. This is an agreement that is, that has been put together by the lead community. That would be the Town of Palmer. It is for the board to review this evening. You certainly don't have to approve it tonight. You can, but if you want to take a little bit more time to look at it, then we, you certainly can do that as well. They are requesting that the board sign it. It's pretty straightforward. I looked at it. There will be a point in time when the Town of Warren will be able to sit down with the Town of Palmer to come up with a, a, a clear schedule as to when we would have some additional resources, administrative resources, whether it be personnel of some sort that we would be sharing throughout this agreement. So we would have to develop a schedule that, that would, that would be available for us to utilize additional staff as part of this agreement. But the Town of Palmer is the lead. They are, they are, they are the authority in terms of, of hiring anybody under this grant. They are the ones that are, in terms of administration, they are the ones that are administering it and preparing the reports and, and so forth. We would also have to, you know, make some recommendations along the way. You know, as the project continues to, the grant continues to play out throughout the fiscal years, we would, we would be required to also report on that as well. But that's something that, you know, we would have to do down the road.
What other towns are involved in this?
So I believe it was Palmer, Ludlow, Warren, maybe where?
Okay.
Where?
Right. Where towns? You would be attending meetings or would it be the Board of Health?
It would be the Board of Health.
Okay.
Or the administrative assistant, you know.
Yeah.
So they're going to be doing immunization clinics and stuff like that?
That's one of the possibilities that they, that they could do.
Would be good if they do like flu clinics and stuff and help out with that type thing.
This is not to replace any existing staff. This would just be additional benefits that the town would reap from staff that may be here maybe once a week, you know, depending on the schedule. That would be the critical part, I think, to this whole piece is, is just finding out how much of the scheduling pie the town would get.
Are we equal partners or is it like a financial proportion or something?
Well, the, the Town of Palmer is the lead, so they have a little bit more of a, of an edge. They have...
They put their responsibilities going down, what they're, they're more responsible for in our responsibilities and what they would be providing. You know, basically for us, all it really is, is we got to educate the public on a lot of these things, the programs that are going to be coming and made available.
Sure.
And just making sure that we advertise things.
We support the initiatives.
Yeah. Yep. And then just going to make sure we post meetings and things like that pertain to this.
Does it afford us, though, to keep us informed about the meetings?
Yeah, they, yeah, they're going to have to.
Our goal is to have that office fully functioning within the next coming up weeks. So, you know, getting that new person to fill Brianna's seat is critically important.
That's good to know.
Do you have any questions?
I don't think so. I think it looks good.
It's pretty standard. It's services we don't currently have. It's helping augment stuff that we don't have and assisting with stuff. I don't think I seen any, seen anything in there for psychiatric help.
Uh, there was mental health.
Was there?
Community health, which some of it can be related to mental health issues.
They're going to inspect our swimming pools.
Yeah, they, they, they tested one of their machines.
We don't have any.
Well, maybe we should get one.
Wait. Is that what we're going to do in the old boxing ring?
Oh, yeah.
We could fill that with water and turn it into a swimming pool, yeah. It's clean now.
Yeah.
Does the water count as an opinion on this? I mean, we're putting something to do to that.
Well, I mean, they asked for it, right?
Yeah, they brought it to us, supporting it.
They brought it to us?
Yeah.
They're a no-brainer.
Yeah, like about two months ago or?
That was, that was about November.
Oh, it was, okay. It's a little longer than two months, then. So I, you know, assuming they're on board, yeah.
It would be great, so. And it's paid through grants, so we're getting service and we're not paying anything. It doesn't cost us a penny and we get extra services.
But that's very good. We only have to advertise this and we are very good at it.
We can advertise it. You know, and again, we're getting something. It's not costing the taxpayers on our town any money.
Yeah.
And we're getting services for it, so.
It's good.
Definitely a help.
It's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Work life's mine.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
No.
Do you have any more questions, Mr. Belize?
No, sir.
Mr. Ferrari?
No.
Chief, did you have any input on this?
No, I'm not really familiar with it, with it that much, but I mean, any, you know, help they can bring for, you know... It's spreading the wealth around for different towns. That's good with me. You know, any of that stuff helps.
Anything public wealth high, wise and, you know, helping in that manner. They do vaccination clinics in support of all that and a variety of things for community health.
The lead town really has to do a lot of work, I gotta say.
Well, yeah.
Like the, the list of Palmer stuff here is like, wow, okay.
Yeah, they got a lot to do, but, you know, it is what it is. Cool.
All right, ready for a motion?
I'm ready.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve and sign an intermunicipal agreement between Warren and the Town of Palmer for certain public health services through the Mill Towns Public Health Coalition.
I second that.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Betty Bettis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I'm actually thinking I'm not, I'm going to start needing some readers here, so.
Your arms aren't long enough?
No, I'm like...
Ocean's Steak Jambalaya.
Huh?
Like two ninety-nine, three ninety-nine.
Yeah. Well, Tammy keeps on telling me that all the time, too. She's like, you're going to get to the point where you need them.
Yeah.
Mike, I just seen my optician, too. And they're like, you're right there.
And they're going to try and sell you like four hundred dollar readers that you're going to lose in a week.
Go to Walmart, grab some cheapies.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
So, and they told me like, like one point five magnification or something like that.
And you want to get like five pairs because you'll need them all over the house.
In your car.
I'm just not ready for that point in my life, yeah.
And you'll sit on them and break them.
All right, so we're on to warrants and bills now.
All right.
All right, sir.
I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants. Number seventy-seven payroll, forty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-one cents. Number seventy-eight vendor, forty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighteen cents. Number seventy-nine vendor, one hundred and five dollars.
I second that.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Betty Bettis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. We're on the bills.
I'm going to make a motion to pay the following bills. BG Mechanical Service, Inc., fifteen hundred, twenty-one dollars and forty cents. Crystal Rock, ten dollars, fifty-eight cents. National Grid, current bills, six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five, six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five thousand... Gee, many Christmas. Hold on, six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-five cents. And then we're going to revote the National Grid previous bills, right? Okay. For a total of three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. C2MA Adams Two, twelve hundred, forty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. Stericycle, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-five cents. Easy True Value, fifty-two dollars, fifty-three cents. Comcast, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy cents. Fire Equipment Incorporated, six hundred and sixty dollars. Verizon, eleven dollars and fifty-one cents. Pine Ridge Technologies, four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. Maya Property and Casualty Group, three hundred and ten dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Betty Bettis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, we're on to the minutes.
See, you're not the only one with bad eyes, right?
I don't think that was a riot problem.
Brain problem.
We have no minutes.
No minutes.
No minutes at this time. Okay. So town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, members of the board. Before you tonight, I got a couple things. We just got before us, and you'll see in your packets, some preliminary FY twenty-four cherry sheet estimates for the town. And it looks like it's, it's going in the right direction for where we need to be in terms of, of funding. You know, the, the, this is the governor's proposal. This is at the very early stages of the budget cycle. We still need to see what the House and Senate will do. Historically, the, the governor's budget has always been modified by the House and Senate. And the House and Senate usually have either some similar priorities than, than, you know, as compared to what the governor has, and some years they, they don't have similar priorities. And so it's, 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 it's keen to understand that right now, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts appears to be in a very good financial setting. They're flush with some money, which is, which is, you know, very unusual. And they have some additional funds. Revenue collections are up. And they're, they're trying to distribute and get the money back to communities across the Commonwealth. You will see in your unrestricted governmental aid, general governmental aid, is up about twenty thousand dollars. So we're estimating, we're estimating to have about a million, sixty-nine thousand, twenty dollars, which is about, about twenty thousand dollars more than last fiscal year. You'll see that there's a little bit of a dip in, in veterans' benefits, which I find alarming.
Yeah, I noticed that. The veterans and elderly?
Yeah. So...
The captors?
I'm, I'm hopeful that the House and the Senate will put back some money for the veterans and, and for the elderly. You know, that, that's critically important. We see a little bit of an increase in, in, in some state, state-owned land, minimal, in a, a small increase to public libraries. You'll see on the, for the regional school district, Quay Bog, you'll see that our Chapter Seventy money, which is, is, is a very important part of how they get their funds for, for the regional district, is up about a million dollars.
Yeah.
So...
Twelve percent?
Yeah, about a twelve percent increase there. So that's really good news for the regional school district, especially for, you know, the, the troubles that they've had in the past with trying to plug some of their, their budget concerns. So that's good news. I did speak to the, the current superintendent today. She was very happy about that. And we're hopeful that it will hold true to the numbers. You will also see that there's a, an increase in regional school transportation. The Commonwealth or the governor has made a commitment to try to fund that ninety percent, which would be huge for small communities like us. And again, this is the, this is the first step in the, the budget cycle. They still have the, the House side of the, the, the budget. They still have the Senate and then they do a conference committee and then they send something back to the governor. But we're hopeful that this year in particular, these numbers will hold a little bit stronger than they have in the past because of the fact that the Commonwealth is such in a strong financial position. They've also indicated that they are going to be expanding some of the grant programs for next fiscal year. So some of the programs that we've participated in this fiscal year, such as the Community Compact Grant, which has been very good to the town, you know, that was looking to be expanded and added some additional funds there for next fiscal year. And there's going to be, I would anticipate, some of the... Um, and there's gonna be, I would anticipate, some additional, uh, grants that, that are gonna become available. Um, in particular, I heard for possibly for public safety, um, for some, some public safety grants, uh, that may be coming down the pike. That, uh, we'll have to keep an eye out. But, uh, it's, uh, it was just released today. Uh, the numbers are before you. Uh, if they hold true, if, if we're on a, a, a good, good path, uh, we're hopeful that they will. Um, to coincide with this, on March ninth, I was able to arrange, uh, Senator Oliveri and Representative Smola will be attending, uh, our Board of Selectment meeting.
Oh, good, okay.
Uh, and so, uh, if you have any specific questions, uh, for, uh, either the senator or the rep, um, to, uh, you know, review these numbers, and you can, uh, speak with them directly that evening. Uh, start thinking about, um, you know, some capital, uh, issues, budgetary issues that you're looking down the pipe. Uh, trying to get involved in the, uh, the bond bill. Uh, there's a bonding bill that, um, that is down at the State House, it's done every fiscal year, but we can talk about them and, you know, talk about that and seeing how the town can, you know, participate in that and, and seeing if, uh, if what funds are available and how that process, uh, will play out, um, because I don't, I don't know if the town's ever had, uh, any bonding, uh, within the State House or any s- geared toward earmarks. Reps and senators can also do earmarks. Um, I'm sure Rep. Smola has, have done earmarks for the town in the past. Um, so, um, you know, there may be an earmark that you may wanna talk to these guys about on the ninth. Um, uh, they, they, all in per- all intensive purposes, they're gonna be here unless there's some, uh, emergency session or something that's going on at the State House, but they are scheduled to be here on the ninth.
Okay.
Um, I also, uh, this week had, had made, uh, contact with the, um, the gentleman, Maurice O'Connell again. Uh, he's the Government Relations Representative from CSX. He's coming out to town on March third. I'm just waiting for a date, uh, for a, a time, uh, on Friday, March third, uh, for him to, uh, come into, uh, town. I, I would anticipate probably late morning. Um, so, once I get a time, an exact time, uh, I will let the board know, um, if, uh, if a member wants to be present or if you wanna...
I'd like to attend that.
No, okay. Or if you wanna just do a whole meeting, um, on the ninth. I, you know, it's totally up to you if more than one...
Who is he?
He's the Government Relations Rep for CSX, for the Northeast. And I have to give kudos to Congressman Neal's office for arranging this.
Yeah, let them know that we appreciate this. This is huge.
Yeah. Um, so he will be here on, on, on Friday, March third. Um, I'll get the time. If, if more than one member would like to attend, that's perfectly fine. Uh, I would also anticipate bringing Ralph, our chief, um, operator at the wastewater sewer plant, uh, because they have a, an issue down there that they're going to need some access to, um, possibly maintain some of the piping that runs underneath the rail. And they wanna know if, that we have a memorandum of understanding. The DEP wants to know if we have a memorandum of understanding, uh, to have access in case we needed to repair some of the piping and stuff that runs underneath the, the rail line. So the town should have a, some type of memorandum of understanding. I also alerted this to this Mr. O'Connell that we would be talking about that as well.
Okay.
Uh, along with the bridge.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, um, I would anticipate us, uh, maybe doing, you know, going out to the bridge as well with him. Um, and then, uh, if you guys wanna have a meeting, you certainly can, you know, have a meeting here, too.
Do you want Jeremy there, too, though?
Yeah. Yeah, we need Jeremy there, too.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Um...
Yeah, we definitely should take him to the bridge, go through, look at it. Maybe by him seeing it for himself, um, will help, give us some leeway. And any, um, any further thing on the, um, inspections? Did you get anything for those yet?
For the inspections of the buildings?
The bridges.
No, I have not.
The documentation.
No, no, I have not received the documentation. Now, unless maybe he will bring a, maybe a folder with him of all the documentation, I don't know.
That would be nice.
Yeah. That will be, uh, you know, he's well aware of that. He's got, gotten a copy of the letter, so. Um, I have not received any documentation as of yet. Um, but we'll see what the meeting will bring and maybe what he will bring to the meeting. We'll give him the benefit of the doubt. So plan on that for March third. I'll get the board out on an exact time. Um, and, um, also, uh, this past Friday, this last Friday, so after our last Board of Selectments meeting, as I reported, we had, um, a, a company that came in and who is, um, contracted with our insurance provider, uh, to tour, uh, the buildings, uh, for, uh, appraisals and, and inspections. Um, and they give a report back to the insurance provider. Um, and we've had, uh, myself, uh, the sodium Jim Dusty, Bill and Fisher, uh, BJ Church, were on the tour, uh, and, as well as the representative from the, uh, insurance company. Uh, and we, we started in this building, uh, we did this building, we did the, uh, highway garage, we did the, um, wastewater treatment plant, um, and we did the fire stations, uh, both fire stations, Station A and Station B. Um, so we're waiting to hear back from them, but, uh, you know, he took a lot of pictures, um, asked, you know, kind of a little bit of history about, uh, some of the buildings, uh, put it all into a tablet, uh, and we'll, we'll be waiting to hear back from him on the report. And other than that, um, we have, uh, our meeting scheduled for, uh, Tuesday, uh, to talk about the budget issues, um, upcoming for the school, uh, at six-thirty. We've been, uh, invited to, uh, to that meeting.
No, Wednesday, right?
Tuesday, twenty-eighth.
Okay.
At six-thirty.
Thought it was the first, okay.
Um, and, uh, that would be the, the recap of, of my, uh, report for this evening.
Yeah, it's Thursday, yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question?
Yes.
So, on the numbers from the governor?
Yes.
Um... So under the chapter seventy section, there's charter tuition reimbursement?
Yeah.
And charter school sending tuition. So, we don't have charter schools?
Right, so, uh...
Is that money that's left on the table for us?
No, 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 no. So if we, if we have a, a school choice, or if we have a school, if we have a student that, um, is a Warren student that we're sending them to a charter, or they've been accepted into a charter school.
Okay, this would help pay.
This would help pay for that.
Okay.
The si- so that's the sending tuition, and then you get, uh, some reimbursement money, um, as well.
And we can use that for trade schools, right?
No.
Like Pathfinder?
Uh, that, that would fall under, um, school, you know, that's a, there's a, there's a thing here for school choice.
Yeah.
So, but again, if no student goes to a charter school, then we never use that money, right?
There must be, in order to get this money, you have to have some kids that, that go to, go to these things, like...
Yeah, okay.
Funding increased a little bit, so there must be another enrollment, or, or the cost went up.
Okay.
Um, you know, they, they've also indicated that they are, um, that they, they're, they're trying to do some more regionalization grants with regional communities, um, which, you know, may be helpful to us. Um, but the rural, rural aid, uh, school aid has increased, uh, about twenty-six point six percent, uh, with the governor's budget. Uh, school, regional school transportation reimbursements, uh, would increase ninety-seven million, uh, statewide, and that would be, uh, a reimbursement rate of approximately ninety percent. So that's our goal, is to get the reimbursement of regional school, uh, transportation up to ninety percent, which is, which is, which is strong.
So, has that been tried before?
It has, it has.
Okay, so is it, it's the, the House and the Senate that squashed it?
Yeah, they, they can, you know, no, they may not do all ninety percent, they may do seventy percent, you know. They did, they may, they may trim it back a little bit, you know, you know, but, you know, i- i- it is, it has been brought up. It's supported by the Mass Municipal Association. Um, so there's, you know, and obviously, we have our reps and senators in, in a couple weeks, we can tell them how important it is.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So this actually, having this piece out here, really will, will help us coincide when we meet with them on the ninth.
Yeah. Okay.
You know, I think having this more funding towards the school in any way is definitely a help. I am a little stuck on the veteran stuff and the, and the elderly. They cut those programs a lot.
Yeah, they did.
We went from, what, seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars?
Forty-two thousand?
To forty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars. And then the elderly went from twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three to six thousand, two hundred and sixty-three. They, I, I know the veterans, they, you know, they really depend on a lot of this. We're definitely gonna have to have a talk about that with them.
I mean, is it possible that...
Well, it could be changed back.
Well, no, I'm saying it, that they're reducing this 'cause there are other programs they came up with?
I, I'm not sure what the reasoning behind it was.
That would be nice to know what the, um, reason it is.
Yeah.
And so the out-of-district vocational school transportation, um, would also receive a boost under this proposal. Um, right now, so we pay a significant, uh, um, portion for vocational transportation for out-of-district for students, for students that live in Warren. Um, this would, 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 would essentially, uh, close the gap to a ninety percent, um, you know, cost of reimbursement, which would be huge.
That's the seven ninety-two thirty-four, right?
Right.
Well, both those numbers, the chapter seventy and the transportation numbers, are pretty encouraging.
Although she cut the special education to zero, too.
Yeah, but it was only two...
It was only two thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars, which is...
What did that pay for?
Not a lot, but if you go from that to, to zero, you know, you figure that's where you wanna invest some money in, is special education.
I did see that the circuit breaker got a lot of funding, right? Which helps. I'm, I'm not exactly sure what that covers, but I know the school board has talked about that, as being a critical funding source.
Regional transit, uh, is up a little bit. It went from sixty-five hundred dollars to eighty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I'll have to see what the, the thought process on that is, if there's something else coming in, or... Yeah. Okay. Anything else, sir? And in the building?
So, yeah, so I can, I can speak about the building improvements. Um, so we've, um, we were able to get, um, the treasurer, the tax collector, and the, um, town clerk, as well as the, um, minister, uh, the, the employee break room, completed for floors. Floors were done, um, relatively quickly. Uh, they were done on, um, last weekend. They wrapped up on Tuesday of this week, with just putting furniture back. Um, all the offices are pretty much back to, to normal. Um, they are in the process now of, um, identifying some new office improvements for, uh, workstations, uh, for the office. Um, so we are, uh, we're, we're going through that, um, and methodically picking out, uh, workstations that will, uh, enhance, uh, workflow and work productivity. Uh, and, uh, so we're, we're doing that. Uh, along with, uh, we had in here today a, a painter, uh, that is a local painter, that has done some paint work, uh, into, in this building in the past. Uh, and we're getting some quotes from him to do, uh, a couple more offices of painting. Uh, we have already ordered some of the workstations. Uh, I would anticipate finishing, ordering those within the next week or so, uh, depending on, you know, getting everybody's selection priorities down. Uh, and, you know, making sure that the cost is kind of spread out, um, throughout the, uh, the rooms, that, you know, a room doesn't get a, a huge amount of, of money versus another room doesn't get as much money. Trying to level out what we're gonna spend per, per office, um, and keeping it within reason. Um, but we're, the project is moving forward.
Okay.
Very good. Um, floors look good, you know, you know, we, I haven't the electrician come in because some, some issues were identified with the electrical work going through when everybody started moving things. Wires sticking up out of the floors that weren't connected to anything, or just some electrical tape racked around them. Chief, don't listen to this.
I haven't seen anything, so...
But some, some real issues that, like, okay, let's get some, um, get some electrician in here and fix these things. The other thing is, again, with the furniture, uh, I noticed when they moved Don's desk, it came apart because it was particle board. Uh, the thing was just kinda really beaten. Unfortunately, with particle board, they look nice and it's great. It's a little cheaper, but it doesn't last, and it's not good furniture for an everyday office. Um, you know, look at these desks, they're wood, and they held up.
They'll be here for five years.
They'll be here for another hundred years, you know, and they would.
Probably not here.
Yeah, hopefully not here when we get something a little updated. But, um, you know, again, you know, don't, don't buy like particle board stuff because, again, I don't want in three years or five years, they're gonna replace everything again. Because it got moved, and then it, you know, the, the, the little hole fasteners pulled out, and the drawers dropped through now, and, you know, and I was looking at Don's desk, and when they moved it, it like literally came apart in places, and it's like, it's all that just junky particle stuff.
Yeah.
You know? It was a big, nice-looking desk, but it didn't hold up. You know, I'd rather have, get something that's gonna last the next twenty years and not have to buy it again than, you know, replace it again for almost the same cost, you know? If you spent a hundred, two hundred dollars more on a desk to make it last ten more years, I think that's worth it versus, you know, having to buy a new desk every few years, 'cause the doors, drawers fell out. And I know one of the drawers in the assessor, um, at the assessor of the town clerk's office, she opened up the desk and the side rails because it was one of those old metal desks, it was a razor sharp on the side, the rail, and she cut herself on it, and I'm like, ooh. Yeah, let's get that replaced. We don't need, chief, bringing anybody to the emergency room for a desk.
Most of the stuff...
Trying to do your job.
Yeah, it's been here ever since I've been here, so it's, uh, and it's been here well before some of the, you know, other positions are in place. And I think I know the treasurer's, you know, Bill Schlossstein had that desk for many, many, many moons before Don was there, so it might be about time.
Yeah, all right, very good. It's looking good. Building's looking good. It's coming together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely the, the lack of maintenance through all these years is showing up, so... I think it's a good thing that we're taking care of it.
Yeah, I think the, this is a building now that we're slowly working on, and I think the residents can be proud of this building. And when people from other towns... the residents can be proud of this building, and when people from other towns come in and do their business here, or visit for whatever reason, it doesn't look like crap. It looks like a nice building, the rooms look good, the floors look good, we have good furniture, it looks professional. I think it's, you know, I think it's a good thing that we're, you know, bringing everything up to snuff and cleaning up.
Taking care of the fire hazards.
Yeah, we've gotten rid of a ton of junk, right?
Yeah. Dumpsters out there again.
Yeah.
To get rid of more stuff.
It will be full.
Yeah.
It will be.
I mean, it's stuff that's been here for fifty, sixty, who knows how many years, right?
It's that four dumpsters that we filled up now?
Yeah.
This will be the fourth dumpster of junk?
This one's smaller.
It is a small one, though.
I mean, you look at the clerk's office and the tax collector, I mean, there's more room now, it's bright.
It looks so much bigger in there.
Yeah.
It's bright in there, too, I'm like, wow.
So, I mean, we're all paying taxes for this building, and to have it look nice and be pleasant to work in and visit, I think is just a great thing.
Very good.
Now, we can get rid of the ugly blinds, that would be marvelous.
The blinds?
Yeah. One thing at a time.
I, I agree.
Those are gonna be here when they tear the building down.
They might be structural at this point.
They'll be back in style.
Yeah, eventually we'll be bit there again.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so, great job. So, everything's going along, anything, oh, and also the building commissioner has also been going along, did the, the walkthroughs, and she was looking at a lot of things, because we also gave her direction to inspect all the buildings, all the town buildings, and identify any concerns, so we could try to get those repaired, and she has a task ahead of her, because, you know, as we do things and we're fixing things, we find new, find new things, you know? Several outlets didn't even have covers on them, and we found exposed wires everywhere, and wires that don't go to anything, you know, just different issues, but we're, we've been addressing those, and it's coming along, so, good job, everybody. All right, did you have anything, anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. So, new business, anybody have any new business?
I do not.
Mr. Lees?
I do not.
Jim?
No.
Old business? Does anybody have anything?
Nothing.
No, sir.
Mr. Lees?
Nope.
Anybody have any correspondence?
No.
Yeah, we, we got an email from the CMR PC, asking us to share a, some kind of like a collecting data from the public, so I put it on, put the link on Facebook...
Facebook and, and the picture of the flyer that they provide to us. I don't know if one of you guys would have put it on the Times page?
Yeah, you got that?
I don't know.
Yeah, remember seeing that directly. I think that might have been just sent to you.
Can you forward that to Karen?
I'm looking for the email.
Yeah, will you forward it to me, please, Derek?
Yeah, you're not in there, I'm gonna forward it to you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. Comments and concerns? Do you have any comments and concerns?
I don't. Hope everybody's having a nice vacation week.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Lees, you have any comments and concerns?
No, sir.
For course, just for correspondence, we did, I know Karen sent it out, Pathfinder's having their budgetary meeting on March fifteenth.
Yeah.
That was the correspondence that we, we did receive.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, Pathfinder's doing it on March fifteenth, then...
Six thirty.
Six thirty. Okay, and is that up? So, Wednesday, right?
That's the same day we're at the library.
Yeah, we get the library thing, too.
Five thirty, yep.
So, that's a Wednesday, so. All right. Very good. All right. Anybody from the public have any questions, comments, and concerns? Mr. Conrad?
Joe Conrad, Lieutenant. Just to let you know that there's no spam going around. Supposedly, it comes out that you've been overcharged on your electric bill, and they wanted to give you fifty dollars, just press number two. It's a spam call. It's just to get your phone number. Don't press the number two, just hang up.
That's one of those, you wanna sign up for solar-type things, or, yeah, any of that stuff.
Texts, emails, phone calls.
Texts, yeah.
Comes from all over now.
Yeah, it comes from all varieties. It's the new junk mail bin of our post office.
Yeah.
All that stuff now. Thank you, sir. Did you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Anybody else in Zoom world have any questions or concerns, or comments, concerns?
None.
None? Okay. So, next meeting is February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at six thirty PM for the school budget meeting, and that is at the school. And then our regular meeting for the Board of Selectment is March second, two thousand twenty-three, at six PM here at the municipal building. Okay. All right, you're up, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Billy Bidens, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. We are adjourned.